I, God in heaven, we thank you for today and for the sunshine, God, and we just pray for these people that are going to govern over this body of people here in Concordia. And we pray that you give them wisdom. We pray that you bless them and bless this time with Jesus' name. We pray. Amen.
Are there any changes to the agenda? We will not have an executive session for confidence.
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert. It's a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seen on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone for public comments? World Polio Day proclamation.
Certainly, this is my name is Dana Brewer. My address is P O Box 549 here in Concordia. I'm here on behalf of the Concordia Rotary Club, and we're very thankful that you're willing to consider issuing a proclamation which would proclaim Monday, October 24th as World Polio Day here in Concordia. And I have a very brief video that I'd like to show you that kind of, I think, reinforces why this is so important. This video is Jennifer Jones. She's the current president of Rotary International, and she's a former co-chair of the End Polio Now Campaign Worldwide. She's truly an advocate for eliminating polio. So if you would shoot that up. Well, I think that pretty well says it all. Because of the efforts that have been, things have been accomplished so far. It's just about all over the world, except for Pakistan and Afghanistan. Fortunately, even with the changeover in Afghanistan, the numbers there stayed quite low. We're very fortunate for that. Pakistan is probably the biggest problem right now, but again, the numbers are in the tens. Much, much lower than what we've been fighting all these years. So at any rate, we thank you for considering this proclamation and the children of Concordia and the children of the world. Thank you for your involvement.
Here's our proclamation. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, service above self, inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease. And whereas today Rotary has contributed more than $2.2 billion in countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $15 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary members in 36,000 clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues of poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Therefore, I, Ashley Hutchinson, Mayor of the City of Concordia, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 24th as World Polio Day in Concordia, and encourage all citizens to join me, the Concordia Rotary Club, and the Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hutchinson. One last comment. For every $1 locally that's raised by a Rotarian or a community member, it's matched by the Gates Foundation. They put in $2, so $1 becomes $3, and $3 will immunize one child in the world against not only polio, but killer measles and several other childhood diseases. So please consider giving a donation if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, can we grab a picture with you and Mayor real quick, please? You already have your wife. They promised not to get my shoes in. So get your shoes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go into action agenda. Minutes of the October 5th, 2022 meeting. And a motion by Commissioner Bell, then a second by Commissioner Lambert, who approved the minutes of the October 5th, 2022 meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number 19.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 19. Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Wentz, a second by Commissioner Hash to approve appropriation ordinance number 19. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Ladder truck bids for CDBG grant funds.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Eric, do you want to start off self, or do you want me to start?
You can, if you want.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. I'm in Vermillion tonight, so I thank you so much for allowing me to join via Zoom. It's a wonderful world we live in where I can have a council or commission meeting with you guys there and then a public hearing in Vermillion. So thank you for that. I want to talk a little bit about the bid opening that we had. It was very exciting. As you guys know, we have three different grant funding sources that are coming in for this. So one is Dane G. Hanson Funding, the other is USDA Rural Development, and then the final one is CDBG. Because of that, we do have a lot of federal grant rules and regulations that we have to follow, and I'm a part of it because I'm helping the city make sure that those are followed. So with that, we had the bid opening on October 10th at 2:00 p.m. There was five different contractors that bid on it. All the bids were submitted and had all the appropriate paperwork, which was exciting. I'm gonna just quickly read through the bids that we received at the bid opening specifically. So, and this is just based bid on 100-foot ladder trucks. So the first bid we opened was from E1 for $1.278 million, and I'm rounding here. The second one was from Spartan Feldfire for $1.13 million, from Pierce Conrad Fire for $1.265 million, from Rosenbauer for $1.099 million, and then from Weissfire Toine for $1.408 million. So that's just quickly the base bids. I think you guys have the actual numbers in your, in your bid, or in your, not bid packet, it's in your documents in front of you. Because we are working with the grant agencies, we can't give any type of comment on the specifications at all. We were purely just looking at the bids, whether they met the specifications that the funding agencies had requested. And so with that in mind, when we opened up the bids, the apparent low bidder was Rosenbauer with a base bid of $1.099 for an X-12 engine. And when we got into the bids a little bit deeper, we saw that Spartan had actually also put in two bids. One was for an X-15, which is the one for the 1.113, and then they'd put in another bid for an X-12 engine, which was 1.098. So it was a difference of $680 between the two bidders. And with that in mind, the new lowest bidder was Spartan Feldfire. So just purely from a lowest bidder position, Spartan Feldfire had the lowest bid. I, we always, always ask the city to take a look at the test, technical specifications and make sure that the, that they're being met and that the ones that are priority to the, to the city are being met. So we asked the city to take a look at those, and I'm going to let Eric take it on from here. But while he's coming up, I just want to know if there's any questions specifically, or we can save those to the end as well.
Yeah, we'll go ahead, Mike. Eric.
So once we got it narrowed down to them, too, I spent a lot of time with both those specs. And going through, the Feldfire has marked that everything that they need those specs, started reading in detail in the body, and became apparent to us and the fire department reviewing it on our bid specs on page 34. I may go too in-depth on this, so just tell me to be quiet. On page 34 of the bid specs, one of the things that we requested is an aerial monitor that it has a remote control to control the ladder and the monitor up to 300 feet away. Feldfire says they had marked, when we started reading the actual specifications of the truck, it talked about the monitor is controlled by tethered cable to the truck at 10 feet. So I called the company and started discussing with them to make sure they understood what we were requesting in the bid specs. That was not in their bid or price. They then called back and said, we can do it, but it's going to be two separate controls, not one. One for the monitor, one for the ladder truck, and there's nothing in writing up to 300 feet. The reason that was put in there is the way we run our department and being as short-staffed sometimes as we are, the ladder truck we have now, firefighters can be up in the basket, and he has incident commander on the ground, can guide, and they can see where they're shooting the water. Getting this truck and not having that basket, the intention was with this remote control, the incident commander to walk around and control the ladder and the nozzle. And if we have a firefighter in the house or on the roof, to be able to control anything to help the rescue. That being said, I've talked to all the full-time firefighters, and they feel that's important, and we feel like having two controls will not, will cause a hindrance of being incident command and trying to control those. So we feel like Feldfire does not meet the standards of the request on that part. There are a few things in Rosenbauer that they've accepted no to, rear inlet on the back, and a couple other small things, but nothing major that we feel is a technical, tactical issue in the department.
Any questions for Eric?
On that monitor piece, the other thing is, a couple of the other companies can meet those specs, but they were at the higher end, so. Makes sense.
So to be clear, then, the Rosenbauer one does meet the specs that you.
The specifications that we deem that we have to have to accept a truck.
And is it worth it then to wait six months extra to get it?
Talking to the full-time guys, and in my opinion, yes, that will make a big difference in tactical situations and fighting the fires. And we didn't get to talk to all the reserves because of the short timeframe, but we have talked to all the full-timers.
I mean, I think in the reality, too, that we're talking about $680. I mean, it's not that significant of a departure from the lowest bid. It still puts us pretty square in the. Not a math person, but I'd imagine the percentage difference is fairly minimal.
Point 00.
0.06 percent.
I guess a question, just maybe for Amanda and more of a. Are there, are there challenges or issues if we can demonstrate that the, the, the next lowest bidder is the preferred bidder for technical purposes? There's, there's no, we're still within our scope and within our range of being able to do this, right? I mean, it's not departing from some kind of policy or procedure.
I'll jump in on that. I don't think they want to answer that. So they had asked that I look at it. So what we have, by law, you have to have, it's the lowest responsible.
Sure.
So since they didn't technically meet that bid spec with the remote, I hate to use the term responsible and say they're not a responsible bidder, but they didn't meet those specs. So we actually, in my opinion, they didn't actually meet what we had asked for again, but thankfully caught that, or we okayed it. So what we can actually say is, and I'm going to put it in writing, and we'll have it on file in case anybody ever says anything or they were upset about it, is that since that remote was not included, and it's such an imperative thing, we would then look to the next lowest bidder who would include that. That next lowest is going to be the responsible bidder, so then we would be okay. So.
On Rosenbauer, there's a couple that didn't, they didn't bid two of your alternate. Is that a huge?
No, and as you see, we didn't accept any of the alternates. We were kind of looking at it, and we've got a couple other ideas that we're going to work on those alternates, but we wanted to see what was out there and just.
It's nothing that you guys.
Have. Everything that we have to have. There's a couple ladders and stuff, and those were put in the specs as hatches.
Okay, in the base.
I move to award Rosenbauer the bid for the replacement ladder truck in the amount of $1,099,123 contingent upon CDBG and USDA concurrence for the justification of chosen contractor and their bid base to be paid with a combination of awarded grant funds and special equipment reserve funds.
A motion by Commissioner Hash, a second by Commissioner Wentz. Is there any further discussion? Seen on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Airport crosswind runway shortening bids.
We held the bid letting on October 10th at 2:00 p.m. Brad Waller revised the specs on the crosswind runway shortening to lessen the amount. And as you can see, the numbers came in a lot lower than previous. S-ville Construction came in at a low bid at $42,200, and both me and Brad have talked to S-ville, and they feel comfortable with their numbers, and they seem responsible. And they have a good reputation, so I approve to, or I recommend to approve the bid of S-ville Construction of the amount of $42,200 of the shortening of the crosswind runway to be paid for out of CIP.
I move to approve the bid from S-ville Construction for $42,200 for the shorting the crosswind runway to be paid from CIP.
A motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Wentz. Is there any further discussion? I have one point, sorry, one question. So the, the price originally was really high because they were going to be transporting dirt. Are they doing something different?
So essentially, we're just kind of pushing it down the hill like we talked about last time. So they're going to grade it down, and they're gonna, there's a farm land that we leased out right now. It's kind of in that area. They're going to grade it down to that field, and then regrade all that to make it farmable again.
Okay, cool. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thanks, Paul. KDOT CCLIP award letter.
So the KDOT approved our mill and overlay for K9 from Archer Street to Cloud Street. I think the Form 1302 is just kind of like a qualifier to get him. So I recommend the mayor to approve the signing of the Form 1302, be sent to KDOT.
We would move to authorize the city manager to sign the Form 1302 for the mill and overlay of K9 from Archer Street East to Cloud Street and see it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Bell, then a second by Commissioner Hash. Any further discussion? Seen on all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Utility billing account write-offs.
Okay, as it was stated in the memo, this has, is something that hasn't been done for at least over 13 years, and we have several accounts that are uncollectible in our U B, accounts receivable balance right now. So it's not really reflective of what we might actually stand or receive in the future. So now that we have this new system, we are trying to move those items off. Basically, there are anything that didn't have a social security number or a date of birth associated with the customer, or they are too old to now place into collections. And the task is the list for our auditorium to approve, be able to see all of the names and amounts, and approve them to be written off. And then also, we are then moving anything that is sent to collections to its own separate collections receivable account now, because it's much easier in our new system, and it'll be separated and clear.
If we write these off, then this, one of these people come back. Can we add it back on? I mean, I know write-off is usually a write-off, but.
Yes, and I think, I mean, we're going to have to keep a, I mean, it's not going to have anything in the system anymore that would alert to it. I mean, pretty sure. It would have the history in there, but it's not going to bring up, they would have the zero balance and say it was written off. But we would know, and we would, I mean, it is our policy to say, open another account, you have to pay your past bill. So we would still be able to take them.
That's what I would like to see.
Somebody know that these people have previously been in collection. Okay.
And most of them, I guess, it is, they're most of, of large and dirty and were deceased.
Okay.
Yeah, I would imagine that that clause would never be engaged, but it would be there for some chance.
I would move to approve the discussed list of utility billing accounts for write-off in the amount of $5,578.46.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Bell, then a second by Commissioner Lambert. Is there any further discussion? Seen on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Resolution 2022-2143, Capers Deferred Compensation Plan.
For several years, we've been working with ICMA RC, that is now Mission Square Retirement, and that has been offered to the employees to do a 457, which is like a 401K for private businesses. A 457 is for public and nonprofits. And I think there's been, that I remember, there's been one time someone came, helped to sign some people up. After that, I dealt with a different person. About every six months, I have questions. When I email, it's somebody new. Sometimes the email is never answered. And everybody that I deal with is in Washington, D.C., and there's nobody that I know of around here. Mr. Lehman from Capers has contacted me multiple times over the years, and he happened to be here a couple of weeks ago and gave me a packet of information. And it's, I've looked it up, and everything with 457 really is pretty much the same from employer to employer and from plan to plan. So the only difference would just be Capers versus ICMA, and obviously, we know, we have a record with Capers, we know, you know, what they offer. He offered to come here as soon as we could start the program with them and, and talk to the employees and sign them up, and he'll come back every, every year when we do renewals. And it just would be very nice. I mean, I'm really big on customer service. It'd be very nice to have somebody that I can actually call, somebody that I can contact. I have notified all the employees, which is only four that have accounts, and I'm one of them, and none of us care. So, and right now, only two are contributing. But it would be nice to be able to offer this to employees when they are brand-new employees coming on. But right now, I don't have any paperwork or any packet of information to give anyone. So it's hard for me to encourage it when I don't know much about it. So anyway, I would really like to recommend switching to Capers. And the next step would be, after the resolution, and they need a copy of it, and then there is an agreement that the city manager, I think, would sign. And then there's also something you sign that gets sent to ICMA, which allows the money to be moved over. So the employees don't have to do that themselves.
And the employees would lose that.
No. Right now, they're all losing the same amount.
I would move to approve Resolution 2022-2143.
Motion by Commissioner Bell, then a second by Commissioner Lambert to approve Resolution 2022-2143. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Demolition, demolition program application. Thanks, Stacy. Demolition program application for 515 West 11th Street.
By Tillman Garston. He's applied to have it. We moved onto the demo program. Got the bids here. You can see from the conditions report and some of the photos that it pretty much qualifies as a foundation building in bad shape. But we have the money, we have the desire, and I would recommend we put it on. Approve the mayor, the commission, uh, city manager has signed the contract and put it in the program.
Do they own the building next door attached?
Yes, in fact, that's why. Yes, that's got a little bit of a blinding influence also, but it took this one a few years, so we'll see. But I'm encouraging to look at that, too. But yeah, that's the reason we're not going to do the title search because there's three buildings basically on my here that the county has upraised. So it's not like, you know, you can walk away from this thing or anything, so. And if there's leans on it, then they can go to the other building on the front, so.
I'm going to accept the application for the building at five fifteen West Eleventh Street into the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of nine thousand eight hundred, Snyder does.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Hash. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Managers report. Thank you.
Managers, on October twenty-sixth will be the closest legislative dinner that the League of Municipalities offers to us. It'll be held in Aviling beginning at five-thirty. The R C P is due this Friday, so if you'd like to join me, please do let me know. And it will, this will be an opportunity to visit with our local legislators, uh, state senator, representative that represent us, as well as visit with league staff and review the state, even if municipal policy efforts were passed during the annual meeting last month. So would anybody like to attend?
I'll hang it on the fence for a while, or tomorrow.
Yeah. And then we did receive notice from the Department of Commerce this week that they did agree with our findings related to housing for the R H I D. And so that gives us authorization to move forward with the next step, which is to review the feasibility study, which is the numbers and details of how the cash flow works, as well as the redevelopment plans. That'll detail out how lots are going to be used and what it's going to look like. Before we do that, we probably need to have a conversation about whether you want to go ahead and proceed with that now or whether you want to wait for the M I H grant to come through. I do have a question into Ken Johnson, Campbell and Johnson, as far as timeline for this. How long will it take to design, to bid, and then to build the infrastructure? And that will relate because the minute that we approve that redevelopment plan and approve that feasibility study, the twenty-five-year clock starts. And so it might be beneficial to wait for a little bit and see if we get the M I H grant. And then that would be started, push that start of the clock a little bit later and increase our your chances of having those homes built and allow that tax revenue to be part of that cash flow. But we'll visit with Campbell and Johnson, get that information, visit with bond counsel, and then share that back with you again. And we should, as a reminder, we should find out for the M I H grant in November for awarded this first round. There were people that were already in line that applied last year that didn't get it, so they would have been in line ahead of us. And so I would definitely recommend waiting if we don't get it in November to wait for the January awards, to see if we get it before we revise and reset our approach.
Once, once we've been approved for that, R H I D, is there, is there is there a time limit that we have to activate that process? Time clock to start the time clock?
Yeah, each, each step activates. So if we go through and look at the feasibility study and the resolution to start, then there's a public hearing protest period. And then after that, then it is published by ordinance and it is in effect. So there is that waiting time period there for this period.
But we're not by waiting until November or perhaps January or even, I mean, like what? At some point, do we need to get that process started regardless of whether we hear from M I H or not? I mean, do we have a window by which to move forward with it?
Just taking advantage of the opportunity for now. And I don't know if there's a hard and fast window since we've gotten to this point. If we, if we stopped now, I don't know that there's any penalty. I don't know that there's a timeframe that we have to move in a certain amount of time, but I'll double check on that for sure.
Because I think it makes a lot of sense for us to figure out where is we're going until we start going in. But I don't want to miss out on the opportunity to do something if we're just kind of waiting forever on the M I H grant and it makes sense for us to do something outside of that.
And we do have, because you set aside that bonding capacity within our capital improvement project, we do have that capacity available without having to go back and republish the budget, without having to raise property taxes to be able to do this. And I guess the R H I D doesn't count against our bonding capacity unless we have to use money back by the public in front of the city if it's not going to produce. So our goal is to give you the feasibility study to show that the project will cash flow, so that we don't have to worry about it accounting against our bonding capacity. Anyway, more on that later. We're still, still working through all that. But I'll double check on that timing. We do also need to set a date for my evaluation. Past couple of years, we've done those at the beginning of December, and that allows the sitting commission to provide that evaluation. Election is coming up here at the beginning of November, and so if there are new commissioners that are seated, then they would take it back during our second meeting in December. So I would recommend September seventh as being the date for that evaluation. That would give us a little over a month to collect the data. And actually, I've sent you over the documents that we've used in the past, and so your discretion, if you want to use those or something differently.
Does that work for everyone else? September seventh? Okay.
Thank you.
That is all that I have. The rest are questions. Okay, staff reports.
Sixth Street Parking Lot is officially done. I planned when I last leave, so I invite all of you all to go check it out. That's all I got.
It's been kids in the parking lot, right?
It's the only two maybe.
As the police chief, there's been a lot of vehicles stored for several years down behind the city shop. And we started that process. We've got the stuff back from the states. Letters are going out to people that those vehicles were last registered to. So that process has moved along to get part of those out. The other ones, we have to go through the courses.
You want to explain what we decided on the storage fees?
Storage fees, some of them have been down there since two thousand seventeen. And twenty dollars today, that makes it very expensive. So what we decided to do is just charge for one year maximum of storage fees and send it out. Instead of trying to figure out every one of them from back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we just thought it'd be easier for administration to just do one year at the max. Sure, hopefully, the hope is just to get them going. That one year storage fees, seven thousand nine hundred and something dollars. So some of those vehicles aren't worth that. So I mean, it's, they're going to probably end up on purple list. But that process is going in with the help up front. We're getting it done pretty quick.
Thank you for doing that. Just reminder of the N C R P C banquet on November tenth. I think I sent that out. I looked this guy's website up. It's a pretty neat website. Works with communities, help make them successful, works with economic development. If anybody wants to go, let me know.
Deadline for signing up is twenty-fifth.
I guess twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
No more staff reports than mayor commissioner comments and start the question.
I just attended the league annual conference, the league annual conference, and I would, I did learn a lot from the seminars and just from speaking to other people. I would recommend anybody and everybody to go. Let's definitely work your time. So I appreciate Amy and Stacy allowing me to go.
I don't have anything unless there's an update on our situation on Seventh Street.
There's always new situations, too.
Yeah, I heard that there's now a a trailer full of stuff there. Yeah, PD has been down there twice now within the last week. There's also a call from animal control that they responded to this last week. And we are working through the zoning work, we're reviewing our pawnbroker's ordinance to see if that is an option. If there's a violation there, that pawnbroker's work. So we are making progress, it's just slow. Okay, thank you. People are still frustrated.
Yeah, we're, we're trying. We just got to do it the right way. So I know, I understand.
Question that doesn't necessarily need immediate action, but at one point in time, we had, I guess, this is kind of spinning off a bit from the comments made at the end of last meeting. Standards. We had talked at one point about some sort of opportunities that we might be able to have in enforcing different code or different standards for non-owner occupied housing. And I wonder if there would be something that we could do at some point in the near or somewhat near future amongst everything else that's going on as we work to try to invest in our housing stock and look at the importance of housing stock. And looking at some of the housing that we have that is not maintained really to much of a standard of any, how many of those homes are owner occupied? How many of those ones are non-owner occupied? And what we might be able to do, one, to help make those homes safer for non, the residents who are owning it. I think there's a number of homes that are being inhabited that are frankly dangerous for them to be living in. To see what kind of what kind of code enforcement or code in action, an act that we could have that might help encourage landlords to be better stewards of their businesses and the people that are dwelling in their homes.
Or business, yes, too.
Fair enough. Anyway, I really don't want to have to legislate people to take care of their stuff, but if that's what we have to do, then so be it. I mean, I think it's it's frustrating to see how many people are working so hard to build and maintain and to invest in this community to see others that. And if there's a reason or a struggle that they're having that makes it difficult for them to do so, then there's a number of different service organizations that we could perhaps try to coordinate with and connect with that would help improve that. But I think that we have a pretty remarkable town here and want to do what we can to help encourage others to share in that and the hard work that it takes to make it such a great town. Businesses, homes, anything, everything, lots, ground, cars. Better stuff.
So I wanted to take the time to invite everybody here to the open house for the hospital on the twenty-eighth. And so we hope you guys can all come and thank you to the city for everything you all have done to help make that project possible. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn to a study session.
We've been in a motion by Commissioner Lambert, a second by Commissioner Wentz to move to the study session. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Adjourned, ready for our study session. They are here.
You guys are ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
We welcome tonight, we welcome Brenda Gillan and Carmen Johnson to join us to talk a little bit about the post community activity center. There's a memo in your pocket that kind of describes the history of it, and I will turn it over to Brenda and Carmen to speak and kind of describe the project.
Okay, thanks for taking time with us. As she said, I'm Brenda Gillan. For those of you that don't know who I am or what I do, why, what might bring me here, I am the executive director of the Community Foundation for Cloud County. So the little backstory of why the heck are Carmen and I here, what do we have to do with this? Is that as the director of the foundation, most people don't realize that we are a three-legged stool. We do, first of all, we try to raise money to build our endowment. And second of all, we turn around and give that grant money away to five oh one C thirties and nonprofits and so on. And but the third leg that most people don't know about is that we are supposed to be community leaders and impacting and improving our, our surroundings. And so that's the third leg, and that comes in, and I'm sure most of you have heard of Dane Hansen. And we wouldn't be anywhere where we are if it wasn't for Dane Hansen. They have supported us immensely. And that is one thing that they ask us to do is to be community leaders and take, take a stand or take a part in trying to improve your community and your surroundings. And they do that through what they call strategic doing. And we signed a contract at the beginning of the year. We renewed the contract, not just signed, but renewed the contract that said, yes, we would participate in strategic doing. So we did the first one that came about was the synthetic turf at the, at the ball fields, which are happening right now as we speak. And the second one, well, and I, so I told them and I was very proud that we were doing this strategic doing project, just like they told us to do. Unfortunately, they said, yeah, not good enough. You need to do more. And as I was sitting there going, hey, okay. This elderly man comes shuffling into my office. And you might know who he is. If you're out and about at seven in the morning, you might see him shuffling around. Do any of you know who it might have been? Who do you think? Ted, yes, Ted Collins. And he said, will you help me? I need help. We love playing pickleball and it's getting cold and it's, or it's gonna get cold. It wasn't cold then. And we need a place indoor to play pickleball. And I said, ding ding ding, strategic doing. That sounds like a strategic doing project. So yes, I'll see what we can do, Ted. And so got a group of people around and started meeting and going through that process. And that process, of course, is trying to bring a group of people together with like ideas and needs and try to take ownership of that and make, make it happen and solve whatever the problem is. And so with the idea of them taking leadership in it. So we got together, did a lot of research, a lot of planning, a lot of talking, scheming, brainstorming. And it went everywhere from surely there's a place we can rent, some little shack in town that would work for pickleball that we could just rent and that would work to the other end of the spectrum was why are we messing around? We really, we're not the only ones that need something in our community that we need to do more than that. Can we do something that would meet more needs than just pickleball? We talked about the fact that so many people are out walking, just like Ted is in the mornings. And God bless him, you know, he fell down playing pickleball and broke his hip, but will probably never play pickleball, but he And God bless him, you know, he fell down playing pickleball and broke his hip, but, uh, will probably never play pickleball, but he's still out walking again. So he's amazing. But anyway, uh, so it ended up, uh, on, on the other end of let's do more for the community if we could. And maybe serve the needs of more than just pickleball with a walking track and, um, more than that. And so I have hand, given you a handout there. And if you, um, flip to the, second page of it, uh, is sort of our brainstorming ideas. If something would really come together, these would be some of the areas we were, we were brainstorming and looking at of things that, um, we would want to see in a, a, um, an activity centi- center in our community. And one of the main people at our meetings when we got together was Carmen, Carmen Johnson. And she is a pickleball player extraordinaire. She, she plays a lot, a lot, a lot and knows a lot about it. And I don't know the first thing about pickleball and I'll obviously never play pickleball, that doesn't mean I don't think it's cool. But, and would love for this kind of a project to happen. But, uh, so I'm going to turn it over to her because her and some of her pickleball playing friends, um, have gone to lots of different places and looked at buildings and looked at, uh, different arrangements and, and things that might be available.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you're aware, uh, but, um, pickleball is one of the fastest growing sports now in the United States. And it's played from young to old. And I have played in a lot of different states. I've played in Florida and Arizona and California and Nebraska and Kansas and so forth. And it is, it is really, it's not only, um, good activity, but you get out and meet people. So, um, we do have a pickleball group here. And we used to play at middle school and of course you know that it's being remodeled. So now we play outdoors in the cold, in the heat. And last, um, two years ago during COVID, we played at, um, the fairgrounds in the Hosey building. It didn't have heat, but we played, we bought some heaters and we played out there. We had one gym. But our group is, is, um, growing. We're up around, you know, getting quite a few numbers now. So we feel like it's imperative to do something and we were so tickled when Brenda wanted to do more. And so, uh, a few of us went around and we looked at, we've looked at Minneapolis, we've looked at, um, Manhattan. There's, uh, three different facilities down there. I don't know. I'm sure some of you are familiar with the Anthony building. It's on the west side of town. Um, then they have the Eisenhower on the east side of town. And then there's the Douglas Center that's on the south side of town. And it, um, it meets a lot of different facets. It has, it has, uh, two gyms. It has, and then you can put three to four pickleball courts in there. It has a walking track that's suspended with an elevator. It has, um, meeting rooms. And we felt like probably for the money, the Douglas Center in, in, um, Manhattan was, would probably meet our needs as well as maybe we could open it up and have other things on the weekends. And also from this has evolved, I don't know if any of you have heard about the fifty-five and over club. But, um, there's a group that has started this and they're meeting now once a week and it's been very well accepted in Concordia. So this is something that could be in this building as well.
And they started going to the meetings for the pickleball.
That started this in hopes of getting, um, the fifty-five and over interested because, um, just to try and get something like this done. So, um, that's basically the general part of it. We did get some numbers, the, um, the Douglas Center, it was built about three years ago now and it costs about three point three million.
Or how many gyms?
Two.
Two gyms.
Two gyms. And it's got seating is, and it has, uh, a weight room too, which we didn't want to go there with that, of course. But we wanted, uh, concession stands, those types of things that you saw on this. So, um, we felt like with, um, with inflation and we would have to, uh, have parking and those types of things. And with that, we were probably looking at close to five million. Now, if you looked at the Eisenhower Center in Manhattan or, um, the Anthony, they were about eight million apiece. And those were, those were funded.
Four gyms.
Four gyms. Yeah, those had four gyms. And those were funded with, uh, city taxes. So our thought was hopefully that maybe we could, we could get a portion of this with, uh, sales tax from the city and then hopefully uh, get donors for the other two and a half million. So that's kind of where we are at.
Do you have any locations?
Yeah. Uh, we had thought maybe we'd have it out there, um, across from, uh, the Ford Motor Company. Razorfield. Yeah. That was, uh, the least amount of, uh, dirt work that needed to be done to prepare the site. It had, um, the utilities there and the owners are very receptive to the idea.
So you're looking at, at building a new, not renovating. You're looking at building a new building, not renovating a existing.
Right. Yeah. It would have a suspended walking track and elevator. Um, I've got some pictures of the Douglas Center. I could just pass those around. I'll just do that.
And probably a couple of offices, obviously for somebody that was helping, um, oversee it and run it. Um, and
What do you, who do you anticipate owning this? The city or you?
That's probably the most logical.
The school district?
I would say, I would say the city is the lot most logical. I, I mean, that's just my opinion. I don't know if that's accurate or not. But I would hope that there would be some cooperation and us being able to share facilities to it if we needed to with, uh, if, if the USD and the, and the college was interested in sharing.
Well, Quentin and Amber, not to put you guys on the spot, putting you on the spot, you both have, have needs for expanded gymnasium space. Like a, a joint facility, what is that feasible with what your like future expansion plans are?
I'll, I'll go first in the way Amber jumped in. This conversation obviously has gone on for a public group.
Ten years?
Being with you, we went to Highland.
I went to Highland together, um, went to that facility, Amy and Amber. Joe Kobe, I liked the Kobe facility. I've sat on a number of, of the meetings with the pickleball ladies and then showed them what Anthony did. And Anthony built onto a middle school. So it's a combination school. School, city venture. So the school district has two of the gyms all day for their PE needs, the middle school there in Manhattan. But then by five thirty, I think they're opened up to the city. Um, but it's, there's just a lot of, a lot of pieces. So you short answer is we have enormous need for gym space in this community from the college, um, to the school district. To, to just city gyms. I think that's, that's something often, I think, um, you know, I get railed on, um, from, from patrons often that we're always talking about athletic space, but athletic space for us is also classroom space because it's PE time and, and those kind of things. You know, when the, when the buildings were built in, in nineteen twenty-nine and our, our building, girls athletics were not a big deal, junior high athletics were not thought about. Um, and now trying to fit in the use of, of how big the youth sports are, um, which we want to support even though they're not school ran, you know, third and fourth and fifth grade, they're not school ran, but they're very popular. Um, people are always asking us for gyms. We're, we're having an argument right now with people trying to get in our gyms as we speak. Um, and so we just don't like being the bad guy. Um, and so we, we'd love to collaborate and, um, be a part of the, be a part of the solution. Um, because I, I think it's a valuable asset to our community. And when we compare us to Abilene, Chapman, Minneapolis, some of, some of these other areas, they actually have community centers to offset some of that space. Um, so the community can use those gyms. So the school district can focus the school activities on theirs. It would be awesome, um, with, with the great stakeholders we have here with Amber, with Amy, uh, with the school districts. To do it different and do it better and do it more economically than anybody else has. And so I think that would be an awesome opportunity, but I, I was very upfront with our pickleball group. I don't want that to drag their project down, um, over the connotation of all that Quentin wants to do is build athletic space because that's not where it is. It's, it's community space, youth space, adult space. Because we are in the streets right now. The school district is the space for, for adult basketball leagues, for adult volleyball and coed volleyball. We are the space. And so, um, we, we want to be a part of the solution and we want to be gracious and offer those spaces, but we also try to fit our, our own programs first. Their school district program, but it's just a delicate balancing act. Uh, and we want to be part of the solution. So we're open to providing.
I think the, the challenge too is that it's such a high, it's such a high need at the same time. I mean, it's not that the different fifth grade, sixth grade teams could be practicing in different spaces. It's, it's all from about four to seven at night. I know that, that Amber was, uh, has coached a fifth grade volleyball team and was talking with another coach and they were, they were able to practice two nights a week. With, with the space that we have and with a different number of teams that are all vying for that same space at the same time. It's just really difficult for everybody to, to be there. So it, it can seem like we have ample amount of space, but the reality is when everybody needs it at the same time, it's you can only fit so many kids on a court at one time. Uh, and I, and I do certainly applaud the, uh, consistency and determination that the pickleballers have. Get to see them out there almost every other morning as they come home from the gym. So they're definitely in a persistent group. I want to support that endeavor. Knowing how few resources and how much needs to be done with those resources. I think that's probably the biggest challenge or the biggest opportunity that we have. How do we, how do we work together without compromising anybody else's efforts, the colleges, the schools, the community? How can we achieve this without limiting other projects that are on the horizon? And I don't, I don't have an answer to that question, but I think that's the question. There's not a question about whether there's merit in it. I mean, I don't think that there's anybody that would say we don't need this. How do we get it? How do we get it done? And then how do we staff it? How do we fund that staffing? Because the, if we, if we say that it's a five million dollar project, which probably sounds, I would think probably today's construction cost, if that was three point three and three years ago, probably a decent target, but then you've also got the ongoing maintenance and staffing of that. We're looking at staffing it for twelve hours a day. Five days a week, that's probably two, if not three positions where are you struggling with? Being able to hire for the, the jobs that we have. How do we fund that also? It's
And it's more like seven days a week.
Be conservative, yes.
Really. One of the things that we had talked, talked about was how, in order to really meet the needs of the community, it would have to be open seven days a week. Seven AM to nine PM. And so you're looking at staffing to be there. And one of the things the city doesn't have is, uh, a dedicated maintenance staff or a dedicated custodial staff, like, like other organizations sometimes do. And so I would think that with the addition of this facility, then that would warrant a, a maintenance person and a custodial staff members to make sure that we kept it up at the level that the patrons would expect it to. So there, there is some costs associated with that that needs to be considered and figured out. I, I know we didn't get just to hear from Amber. I don't know if you want to hear from Amber as far as college needs are and how many of you have the facility to do.
Sorry, I can't see you. Thanks. Um, of course, I echo, uh, really what I could stand up. I had the look, like I said, we've had conversations and I know Amy and Quentin and I have had conversations about, you know, we went to Kobe to look at their, uh, community center there, which is really, uh, a neat project for them. And they all worked together, the superintendent and us out there. The college president and the city worked together on that. It's a magnificent project, seventeen million dollars. But, um, it, it may exceed the needs that this community has, but just something that, that, um, that it's hard to go to that community and see if Kobe could do it. Well, that's anyone that's called Kobe. Kobe can do it, why can't we do it? You know, and so it's really kind of, um, hard then to come back and, and how do we make that happen? Because there are other facility needs, of course, we have, uh, schoolings, we have housing needs and, and Quentin really needs updated school facilities, high school and stuff. And so, um, for the college, even with our own, you know, we talk about scheduling practices, stuff like right now, men's basketball is six AM. And then men's basketball, I think is the premier sport for a club. Well, they're at six AM right now because that's the only time slot they can get. Um, and then they're trying to get on late at night. Tonight we've got volleyball, so they're not getting on at all. So, and then we, we, if there's, if they have gym space or their gym board being redone, we have them. We sometimes have the, the volleyball leagues. If there's a conflict somewhere else, we, we're welcoming to them too. So, you know, we have one court and we're a, a division one college. And, uh, we have national champion, uh, cross country and indoor track team. And we don't even have an indoor track. That's I mean, it needs to be redone. I mean, so you think about training athletes. And, and we share the track with, with the high school for outdoor and it's worked beautifully. Maybe not to everybody, but I feel like we've worked really well together on that. And so ideally it'd be great if we all were able to come together and, and do that, but setting up priorities. I know what the colleges' priorities are. We just finished fundraising, we're very close to finishing fundraising for a new educational space. Um, and so that's super exciting. Um, but it, we can do it. That's a fourteen million dollar facility that, that, that we were able to go and secure funds for that are a taxpayer dollar. So I know that, that doing a facility is achievable. It's just, you know, it's going to take all of us and we all have to be all in. So I I don't know what else to, to share other than that we're absolutely interested.
You know, I have learned from my friend Phil Gillan that Kobe does these projects kind of interestingly. They take their sales tax and they do that, the ten year sales tax. Where you, the public has a, can vote on it. You know specifically what that project is for, and then it's done in ten years. And that's how they've been able to kind of do a lot of different projects. So I guess, you know, after reading from your school board meeting Monday night, it seems like that might be a pool that you'd have to tap into. So you know, with, if this project took those funds, you know, that kind of limits. So I, I guess we just have to be cognizant of if this project goes forward, does that limit what you all are able to do?
And that's one of the last things we want to do. We don't want to step on anybody else's toes and do it. But I also know, like you said, how do we do it? And maybe it's very limited. Maybe we only do five years, you know, five years of sales tax. And, and get fairly close and maybe we're successful getting grants and
One year is one point two million. Is that about right?
Right. So five years.
Every month.
So we've got five millions or so in five years. So
Well, and maybe this project can alleviate some of Quentin's problems with needing gyms for the school. So on women, which some of the money you need.
Well, and I think was it you, Amy, that said a four track, walking track? Who hasn't been said that?
Oh, you know, we, we talked about, so like, um, I, I just, from, from spending some time there at the college, I understand that when those athletes are running, right now they've got two lanes and they've got classroom doors that swing into them. But if the athletes are working out, it's very difficult to also have general public up there. And so if, if we were doing a walking track, especially if it was going to be a part of, I highly recommend a four lane track. And I've seen those in other places you guys probably have too. Where the inside lanes are for walkers, the outside lanes are for runners and they switch off every so often. But having enough space for everybody would be really important.
And I think that one thing that really excites me about this idea is that it's so far reaching. I mean, don't you play pickleball? Yeah. See, he plays pickleball. And we already talked about Ted playing pickleball. And it doesn't have to be just about pickleball. I think there's a ton of walkers in the community that would love having a place to go and walk also other than, what is it Walmart? I don't know what they do.
That's, that's really about, I mean, I think you might be able to go to the college. There's really very few places you can
Right. And so, you know, it becomes a health facility. I mean, I just love that it's got so many fingers going and helps in so many different ways.
And one of the things we talked about and it's listed on here, like a pot lodge, general gym. So we've got to focus on childcare in the area right now. One thing I've noticed is that when you have kids, especially kids under the age of five or six, if it's cold for long periods of time, and so there is nothing for them, no place for them to go to get their wiggles out here in town. And so if we were to do a community facility, I would
And so if we were to do a community facility, I would like to advocate for a tot lodge jungle gym, someplace where the daycare providers or moms can pick their kids. And get some of those wiggles out during the very cold weather.
Cold weather, hot weather. Wet weather.
The other thing we haven't really talked much about is that I've heard, as I've shared this with the idea, is the multipurpose room and having a place. I'd love to have a place where men, women, whoever that wants to go in the morning and have coffee and play cards, or, you know, something like that, or have a meeting um could use. For that, or if it was big enough, could be a reception, or, you know, whatever the case may be, there, I think there's a need for that also. But basically, we've worked on this for I don't know how long, three or four months now, and feel like we're kind of spinning in circles and don't know whether we should keep working on it or not. And I think uh what's really brought us to this is we have talked with, uh, helping with the.
Okay, it's, we've talked with a um architecture firm in Manhattan, they did the Douglas Center, it's the Bruce McMillan. Firm, and we've talked with Gary Baker, and he's he's been up and visited with this group of city. Somewhat city officials and uh pickleball group, and basically, for a better word, we would uh. He would do a feasibility study, and we would need, we thought maybe we could get the grant money for that.
Well, that's where we're at, whether or not we could, and and it would do renderings. It would do renderings price for building it and all of the things that go along with that, but um his price, and that doesn't mean we would have to use him, but it was twenty four.
Twenty four five.
Yeah, twenty four thousand five hundred dollars for that, well, that's a lot of money to 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 spend on something that you don't know if it's going to happen or not, and I don't even know where that money would come from necessarily. So before we would. Try to go forward finding money for that, we would have to know if it's even something that we're serious about pursuing, so that's why we're here talking, to see what's your opinion, um, do you think it is? Worth trying to pursue.
The the short answer is yes. The answer of how is probably a little more difficult to, because it it has been an issue, it has been a question that we've talked about and different groups have talked about. And I think that. I mean, I think that the feasibility study, I would imagine, is going to come back fairly similar to our housing study in that we 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 need some validation, what we already know is that we do need it, it is important.
And I don't, I I wish you wouldn't call it that, because I think it's more along getting us drawing.
Sure, sure.
Here's the square footage you should do, um, rather than doing either or, I think he's already on board and we definitely need it.
But then, so then we have, we have, but we have the numbers that we. There we can have more concretely, but we're still have to figure out how do we, how do we put it together, how do we staff it?
Right, and and that's the big question, right?
And I and I did, I did wonder about that, reading the about the. The conversation with the improved um school facilities and the need for athletic space, which which I agree, uh, you know, it is important, classroom space is important. All the space is important, and there's not a part of that building that's not important. You know, where 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 are our opportunities for efficiencies, because I think that's how we make this project work. Is in the in the overlaps that aren't going to become conflicting in nature, so the the challenge that I've heard to a a joint project. Um, the concern that people uh have voiced is, well, the the college says they want their volleyball team to practice, but the high school says they want their. Team to practice, but the pickleballers have their tournament on Tuesday, who who gets, who wins out in that fight, is it, well, the college put up two hundred thousand, but the school put up three hundred thousand, so the school gets to go first? It's it's sort of, I think, in a way, uh, I mean, I think that there's some legitimacy to the question, but I think it's also kind of some of what, in my opinion. Makes Concordia the challenges, it is, I'm fine with it as long as I get it first. Right, and and I think that's that's an issue that we need to be able to address and to figure out how we can share this space. If we're going to share in the funding, uh, we want to be able to share in the utilization of it, how do we iron all that out? I don't know the answer to that question, but it's something that we would need to figure out going into it, so that people could feel more confident investing in it. What are the opportunities for efficiency in the school district, knowing that that's the need for that? There's nobody I'm talking to that doesn't think we need more athletic space.
But I also don't think that that's what the community is going to support immediately. Even though you're saying that, and they all agree that, I think there's a lot of people that would be on the walking track at pickleball. I mean, that segment of our community that would be as much in favor of that and more in favor of that, that it would be offering that. So I'm not saying I'm not disagreeing, no, I'm not, but but uh but again, it goes back to me liking the idea that it's broader than that, it's broader than just athletic gyms. Um, did you talk, um, and it's not even fair to compare, but, you know, Abilene and those people you've talked to, did they have issues with what he's saying? You know, that, oh, they wanted this time that, you know.
No, they didn't, their uh their um. Rec director has her office at Abilene, and they built that one nineteen years ago, and it cost about one point nine million, that's how much things have gone up. But uh they they are super glad they've got that, and they have different, they have schedules that they follow, so it didn't seem to be a problem.
It's their school, you said.
Pardon?
This is school.
Yeah.
And it might be something where if there's if there's ancillary space and there may not be as much competition, then because you're just going to have. The school spaces, then it can be all the school, the college's space can be all the college, and so there may not be as much buying for the same space at the same time, it could be.
And maybe three gyms instead of two, I mean, because that's all the problem, but then you pay more money, yeah, but then there's more money.
Right.
We were just trying to come up with plans that would. Be acceptable to the area.
Well, it seems like everybody knows we need it. Willing to work together, so as far as pursuing your, the next step, then. Probably need to do that.
Kim, I don't need to put you on the spot, but Kim Up is a grant writer and she um has lived in that world, the grant writing world. Do you think there are?
Yeah, I think from an overall perspective, it goes down to exactly what you said, there 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 appears to be a very collaborative. Group of people that are saying there's a need, but I think it's also the need of um. The need of the school district for for classroom space, for athletic space, for um. Activity space, the need of the college for the same, the classroom space, for athletic space, for activity space, um, for the community. Um, be, you know, and it becomes a greater issue of of community wellness. And and are there opportunities for some grants, yes, but i- is that, um, is that an opportunity that is a guarantee, no? Um, I think I I think, you know, the next step would would be to say there there's there's definite interest, there's definite community need, can we put together that data, can we put together that information? I also know, and I mean, we knew to this community, this conversation has gone on for thirty years. So um it 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 needs to, it needs to go from a standpoint of um where, you know. How do we take the conversation to the level of of um. Working together and will it make that we. Again, that we put the information and the data together on what does need specifically, and how can that benefit the community, not just from the standpoint of how does it benefit the school district, how does it benefit the college? But how does it benefit the communities?
So I'm going to interject, just briefly, and I and I think you have two schools of thought, and one, I don't want to take anything away from pickleball at all, that's. Not my goal, but what school thought is to follow a a smaller scale of the five million dollar concept. On a on a ten year sales tax initiative with addition of grant funds and private donations. That is a a tool or a mechanism that I think this community uh could support and and do it well. I don't, I don't believe, and I don't want to speak for Amber, but I I don't believe that will fill the complete need. Uh, of the city by itself at at that type of a of a situation. And another school of thought could be, again, utilizing this the sales tax concept like we proposed last November. You know, on a twenty five or thirty year commitment, but much like you had committed the infrastructure pieces to si- uh, street infrastructure. That portion of the sales tax going to that, and I think we did it at last time at ninety ten or whatever it was, ninety percent, ten percent. Could there be some kind of a collaboration on that? Um, maybe it's not ninety ten, maybe it's eighty five, fifteen, maybe it's eighty twenty. Combination of of school fund, combination of college funds, combination of city tax dollars and 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 pieces together to get our cake, and need it to um. And and tie it all into one. One project, you know, the school get the get gets the classroom space they need, you construct some kind of a quasi Kobe. Initiative that's built on the campus at cloud, um, we would be able to play games there and potentially have um. Excess space like Kobe does, um, I think they have two practice gyms and and then the main gym that they play their games in, um, that is. Got a walking track around, and it's got community space also to host, you know, conferences and and pieces like that, it's, I think it's. Two to three hundred person conference room in the in the same space, um. You know, the challenge in this community, as we try to bring um KSP convention or anything like that for school wards and and so forth here, we don't, we don't have the space. Um, we we're going to the college oftentimes for big professional development opportunities, we don't have, we don't have that space, so again, I I think the city would benefit from that kind of space as well, I think. If you look at people trying to have family reunions and wedding receptions and those kind of things, um. I think that's another school of thought, um, and I I truly believe, if you guys had a chance to take a quick four hour, I'd have to go, we um, take a peek at it, um, they've done it right, uh. And I think when you balance that kind of a concept, I think it fulfills your, um, as we're trying to figure out how to staff that. Um, because I do think, you know, by putting something at the college, and I won't speak for Amber again, but all of a sudden now you have some student help that could facilitate, um, some of the clean, if you have to have some kind of a. Director, maintenance, extraordinary, but then you can utilize a lot of college labor, um, like any of us that went on campus, had all kinds of student jobs, it. Were study type of opportunity, so it will fill that need, um, and maybe if all three of us are in the same boat together. You know, we can all help support that, um, for the maintenance uh of of the beautiful facility, much like Kobe is, and and they're the the beautiful template they've done it.
So you're talking, in your concept you just talked about, is that just one facility then, but a thirty five year?
Yeah, maybe like the the Kobe facility of the the seventeen million dollar evil um kind of a concept, but. I don't know if Amber has room up there or not, I I I'm just spitballing, um, but that kind of a concept, um, tie that into a twenty five or thirty year note. Bond con campaign tied into the school piece, sales tax could help support that, with private donations, the school could focus on majority academic space. And then we haven't left out all those pieces. The old gym at Concordia High School is. Not going to withstand the next fifty years, it just won't, so we're going to have to have two gyms to facilitate having just PE classes in in the high school, so. We'll have to have some kind of a smaller concept of a gym at at some point, but like games and all that can be shared out at, and extra practice facilities can be shared out at the college. So would it be just an idea? Would it be fair to say then that that the needs of the college are going to be fairly similar in size and scope? Between the height, between USD and the college, I mean, generally speaking, I know. I put you on the spot, like, is there something that you think the college would need, that the high school wouldn't, or that the the school would and the college wouldn't?
Um, I think that they probably need need more gym space in review, honestly, but that's why I don't think, I mean, I know scheduling can be a conflict, but honestly. Our gym is where we want games, because it's it, we provide an atmosphere there that that we. Sure, we'll probably do something there, but we need a, we need a practice space really more than anything. Um, and the the track, indoor track piece is is something that we need, those are the biggest needs that we have is just extra practice space. Um, a way to remember that that could or could not be in this, um, because we have other avenues for that, but I I think they're similar. But different enough to where I don't think it would be for space all the time, but.
I think my my question is, like, how do we? Identify the largest user, because then the others would be able to fit within that, right, and if we just, if we just do a two gym space. We may not be able to get the yield out of that, that we would need to support that, so then we do, then the, we have an increased need for greater space as opposed to being able to identify what's our greatest. Need, and then my my guess would be if if it is USD, then the college could augment their athletic needs out of that space, it would certainly be able to have the. The facilities necessary that would also support the community. Right, but it's going to be easier to fit all of those things into the the larger scope, and so if you are talking about folding this into some sort of. Facility improvement with a community piece involved, that, so maybe we we break it out to be seventy, thirty, uh, forty, sixty. Right, that that would still allow for the opportunity. To assist with the school improvement, but still create the opportunity for this. Community space that then could be utilized by the USD, by cloud and the community as a whole, but that might give us our greatest. Overlap and 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 efficiency and funding source then, where people know what they're getting into and support it.
I know the Sharps um practice facility, I think is what it's called there in Salina, they have a football field and then two. Courts, I don't think there's a walking track there, but they um. Have somebody there all the time, or certain business hours, so I don't know, there might be another person there on tech to see how they.
To see how they.
Hours and staffing and all that.
I guess I I would like to mention, I mean, it sounds like the city would need to be a fairly heavily involved player in this, where does this fit on your priorities as as far as time and. Your expectations of staff commitment to help flush this out and figure out what needs to happen to to be a good partner with us.
I think the city needs to really focus on housing, if we can't bring people in, we're not really going to need more people for this facility, but I think this is. Definitely a need, as my twenty one year old played the little girls volleyball, we struggled a lot with trying to get practice scheduled and. Sometimes you just practice once a week, so I know it's definitely a need.
Knowing that this has been a conversation for the better part of thirty years, right, or at least certainly my my history here in Concordia, I want us to be a part of the conversation moving forward, I think. And and I and I guess part of my question was asking is that it it doesn't necessarily seem like it would make a whole lot of sense to spend twenty four thousand dollars to get. Money and and a facility identified, if that's not, if if we have maybe a grander scope involved, or we could maybe accomplish that in different means. I don't want to say, don't go do that, if that's what, but if if we're struggling to figure out what that next step is, it feels like that maybe. As a city, as a group, whether we want to keep funneling this through strategic doing, but it seems like it dovetails with facility improvement. Conversations at the at the school, it would probably dovetail with some of the. Conversations that you all are having at the college about the need for this, I mean, that that need is going to be fairly immediate, right, I mean, that's. So it's, uh, to me, it seems like it's something that is an active conversation in each one of these institutions, and it would be something that the city could continue to be involved with. And and a part of that conversation, so I mean, I don't think that it needs to take. Precedence over housing, but I think it's something that we still need to be in involved in a conversation of figuring out. How can we fold this into all this, and how can we, how can we work towards making that happen, if the city was involved in the conversation about sales tax, my guess is that if. If the school moves forward with that, there will be a conversation to be had sooner or later as to whether we want to partner again, right, so that's going to be part of that conversation anyway, so we might as well be involved in that leading up to it. Where we can sh- shape part of that athletic component, at least from the recreational wellness and recreation aspect of the city.
I do think we need to remember that if any of it's going to involve sales tax, we have to seriously look at whether or not that would pass, whether the community would be able to that.
And for an answer I'm not with too, a little, I think we kind of got an answer about what a third, what folks feel about a, a long term sales tax. And I think that, you know, those, that's, that's hard to swallow. That was a hard pill to swallow for the community, a long term sales tax. So kind of revisiting that whole concept of the ten year, very special project, not a portion of it goes to the city for a little thing. Like all of it goes towards the project. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like a more straightforward and like, you know, straightforward way to do it.
But then I worry that we have the, we built the elementary school without locker rooms issues here all the time, which in the end of take care of themselves, nobody takes showers anymore. So it's not a big deal that, did we do it right or not, you know? So then I, you know, how many people are going to be saying after that, you know, if you don't go big, oh, why didn't you do it right to begin with? Well, we got it done at least, and that's where I go back and forth, did we get it done or, you know?
Well, and you can remind those people that if they had past bond issues for this school district, those things were in a great.
Yes, yes, yes. So I don't know, I go around in circles, so.
I have to be on the score. Built that, building. You know, you have to cut things, like the air conditioner, because it wouldn't, that's.
And then do you guys feel like you've got direction on how to proceed now and through or?
I think, is there a way that maybe the collaborators could kind of think through if, if they, there is a real chance at collaboration, exactly what it looks like, you know, what would staffing look like? Just in, in what would maintenance look like and um, kind of some of those details put together? I think that would be.
What, what their needs are that could be met with this building. And, and how, you know, you still have your pickleball courts, so you can play pickleball and I mean, because Quentin needs gyms, but he also is not going to want to have to bus kids during PE to another facility. I mean, you know, that's just not feasible. He's going to need a gym close to this high school, junior high. So he's going to have to do something there if they take the old gym or classroom area. So, you know, all of that needs to be put together. You don't want to bus kids if you don't have to. So.
Sort of.
Everybody needs to know what they need that could help in this facility and what they're going to have to figure out on their own.
Okay, so I'm hearing that is we have what the pickleball would like to have in here. And I'm hearing that being, you'd like the three of us to get together and flesh out details.
I would think every entity that's participating or members would want to see that too before jumping in.
Without forgetting that the bottom line is what would pass. What could be paid for.
Well, I think that's.
Really, that's the end.
And what can be sustained.
And that's maybe going to, to Quentin's two schools of thought. So I mean, if it's going to be something that's going to be longer term, bigger scope, then, then do we want to just, would it make sense then to move forward with a smaller, isolated community center that's solely focused on this? Right, and that may be part of where the community foundation is a part of that conversation to figure out if this is going to be our five, ten year plan, but we want to have this happen more in the next couple of years, then it might make sense to do it. Or tentatively, but if it looks like we really, honestly, with the way that the schools move, with the way the colleges move, we probably could fold this into a plan and have it be a part of this larger scope and then we, we'll be able to save that. And sometimes you just need to do what you need to do to get it done, but if we can fold it into the bigger project, I think there's an efficiency there, but.
Yeah, and I totally agree.
There's a bigger question mark there.
Would it be any cheaper to try and find a building that could just be renovated? I mean.
The hospital was, if the hospital was any example, no. I don't know, right? I mean, they tried that and they said absolutely not.
Finding a building that's empty in Concordia of the magnitude or the size, they just aren't there.
I don't have another Alco.
No.
And even the Alco wasn't tall enough. Basketball.
Yeah, but for pickleball and a walking track, it would be.
Pickleball, what'd you guys, I forgot, was the ceiling on that sixteen?
We need right at sixteen.
So it's, it's the same, just under basketball.
Now just work.
How tall is it?
Pretty tall.
I like that. I mean, I, when CrossFit closed or when they, when that building was sold, I know that we were looking for space on that and it was really difficult to find viable space that would have the height and that we needed. I'm pretty fortunate to have found that, but I don't know that it would support. I could probably get a pickleball coordinator maybe too. They're few and far between. I believe in it and I want it to happen, I don't know how to get it done.
Our action is proceed and collaborate. You're good.